I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Your heavenly father, we give you thanks for the brief reign this morning. We ask if it be your will, he send bountiful reigns to this region. We ask for you to be with us today to make our decisions. Our conduct here be pleasing in your sight. And we ask for all persons who are have the opportunity to vote in our upcoming elections to make their decision and their choice known to us. When we think of all the abundance that you've given to us, help us, help others who need our help. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I don't have any chair comments this morning, and so we'll move straight to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good morning, everyone here gathered. Uh, we have the opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone registered with the clerk for public comment? All right. Anybody wants wishes to address the commission? Hearing none, we'll move into the business agenda. Uh, this morning, we'll now hear from Beth Koksel, Livwell Finney County Coalition.
Good morning. I'm Beth Koksel. I am the Director of Community Health at Livwell Finney County, and I also serve as the project manager for our Drug Free Communities Grant that we have. I'm here today to ask for a proclamation to declare it Red Ribbon Week in Finney County. So I'd just like to take a few minutes to tell you a little bit about our Drug Free Communities Grant and what we're trying to do. Um, so the Drug Free Communities Grant is a federal grant, which allows us here in Finney County to take a proactive approach to preventing youth alcohol, marijuana, and tobacco use. Through this grant, we're bringing together individuals from twelve different sectors, including schools, law enforcement, healthcare, and youth-serving organizations, to collaborate on creating strategies that promote healthy, substance-free lifestyles for young people. A great example of our work is during Red Ribbon Week when our Resist Chapter at Garden City High School will be visiting local chapters to help educate students on the dangers of tobacco use. It's a hands-on effort to empower youth with the knowledge and confidence to make better choices for their health. We as adults will be busy at parent-teacher conferences, um, trying to boost participation in our Kansas Communities That Care Survey. Um, this survey is a valuable tool, which helps us gather data on youth behavioral and risk protective and behavioral data on drug and alcohol use. It really assists us with tailoring our prevention strategies to help meet the needs of our students. By working together, we're building a healthier, safer future for the youth of Finney County. And I'd like to thank, um, some of our coalition members that are here today that help serve as those twelve sectors. Um, Shruti and Stephanie both serve on that committee. And then we have some of our Livwell Board members here as well, Jeff and Michelle. Is there any questions I can answer about the Drug Free Communities Grant or anything that we're doing?
Commissioners?
No questions. All right.
All right. I do have, um, some little adult pledges that can help provide information for everyone here today. One thing we do know is that it's better to have sixty-one minute conversations with your kids rather than one, one hour long conversation. And we also have some little red ribbon pins like I'm wearing today, so we have those for all of you as well.
Pass those out?
Yes.
Beth, while you're doing that, I'm going to read the proposed proclamation and then ask for the commissioner's approval. Red Ribbon Week, October twenty-three through thirty-one, twenty-twenty-four, in Finney County, Kansas. Whereas alcohol and drug abuse continue to be a major public health and safety concern in Finney County, Kansas, and whereas it is imperative that community leaders, parents, teachers, and all citizens of Finney County unite to address the problems associated with substance abuse and promote a healthy, drug-free lifestyle for all our youth. And Red Ribbon Week is the nation's largest and longest-running drug use prevention campaign, celebrated annually from October twenty-third through October thirty-first, and serves as a reminder of the importance of drug prevention efforts. And whereas all residents of Finney County are encouraged to demonstrate their commitment to a drug-free community by participating in prevention activities, programs, and educational events that promote the message of living drug and alcohol-free. And whereas Finney County community members, in partnership with local schools, law enforcement businesses, and other organizations, play a critical role in preventing drug use and supporting efforts that will eliminate the demand for illegal drugs, alcohol, and tobacco among our youth. And whereas the efforts of Livwell Finney County Health Coalition, Resist Chapter, and other local agencies have been instrumental in promoting drug-free living and providing resources for individuals and families struggling with substance abuse. Now therefore be it resolved that the Finney County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim the week of October twenty-third through thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, as Red Ribbon Week in Finney County, Kansas, and encourage all citizens to participate in the efforts to promote prevention, raise awareness, and work together to build a safer, healthier, and drug-free community. Signed, Jerry Schultz, Chairman. Vice Chairman Jones, a motion, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve this, uh, declaration for Red Ribbon Week.
Second?
Been moved and seconded to approve the proclamation as read. Any further comment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll sign. Of course we can. Let's go up front and get the board members. Can I get my pin on first? You just told me to have sixty-one minute conversations with my grandchildren. What happens if the ribbon bag is smarter than the chairman? Okay, thanks. I got it. Finally. I will come around and let you.
Thank you.
Help me out here, we didn't do anything.
My kids are participating in Red Ribbon Week at their school, they're wearing pajamas today.
Oh, there you go. Red?
Reds are bright.
Oh. And how, how much time do you say to speak with your grandkids?
Sixty-one minute conversations.
Oh, I'm thinking that.
One minute.
The point is shorter conversations more often.
Well, with my grandchildren, that consumes about their attention span.
Yeah, that's part of the reason why.
Well, back to our agenda, Madam Counselor.
That would last about.
On a more serious note, other than my discussions with my youthful grandchildren, let's turn to Dante Thompson and the discussion with regard to Maryland with Fables, requests for a waiver.
Artie, good morning. I'm Dante Thompson, a planner with Neighborhood Development. The applicant requests a waiver to allow more than one semi-truck and trailer to be parked on her property at thirty-ninety-five Mason Court, Finney County, Kansas. The property is zoned RR Rural Residential, contains approximately two-point-two-five acres. The property has one home on the lot, in addition to a conditional use permit to park one semi-truck and one trailer that the Finney County Board of Zoning Appeals approved on August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Today, the applicant is requesting to park an addition, up to an additional three semi-trucks and trailers on the north side of the property. At the request of the Finney County Board of Zoning Appeals, staff completed a survey of all semi-truck and trailer parking conditional use permits in the county to verify status and conformity. An onsite inspection completed on August second, twenty-twenty-four, determined that the property at thirty-ninety-five Mason Court had more than one semi-truck and trailer parked on their property, therefore violating their conditional use permit and the Finney County zoning regulations. A violation letter was sent to the applicant on August sixth, twenty-twenty-four, notifying them of the violation and to remove all additional semi-trucks and trailers from the property. After receiving the letter, the applicant contacted staff to discuss whether there were alternative options for keeping more than one semi-truck and trailer. However, the RR Rural Residential zoning district does not allow for more than one semi-truck and trailer on the property as a permitted or a conditional use. As a result, staff determined that the applicant could have more than one if the property was rezoned to the I-one, I-two, light-to-medium industrial district. This district includes the truck and rail terminal permitted use, and the applicant would be also required to apply for a conditional use permit for a night watchman's quarter to ensure the current residential home remains compliant with the zoning regulations. The Planning Commission considered their rezoning request at their September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four meeting, and tabled the decision. The Planning Commission directed the applicant to request a waiver from the Board of County Commissioners to allow for more than one semi-truck and trailer to be parked on the property. Throw two alternatives in front of you. The governing body may approve the waiver, or two, the governing body may not approve the waiver. Staff has no recommendation, and there is no fiscal impact. Um, and the property owner is here this morning as well.
Questions for the planner?
Not a question, Mr. Chairman. It was interesting that the Planning Commission tabled, which means to me that they'll be talking about it at the next meeting. That's what tabled means to me, but yet then the, the direction was for the applicants to come directly to us. So, and I did read through that, but help me understand a little bit more about that part of the discussion, the Planning Commission.
Yeah. The Planning Commission wanted to table their decision on the rezone to see if the applicant could get a waiver under their current zoning district to allow for their semi-truck parkings. They wanted to see how this would go, and if they need to consider the, continue considering the rezone or not if, if the applicant has not granted the waiver.
Okay, that gives me a little better context. Thank you.
Right. Have Chair, well, uh, do you have anything else?
Yes, if may I have a.
Sir?
I drove out and looked at that layout, and as just visiting here with, with Commissioner Reese, I, in a way, I'm reluctant to, to grant a waiver that maybe sets a bad precedent. But on the other hand, uh, if you'd go to the picture of the, of the aerial view of that, where those semis set, when I was out there, there were none parked there, but they were, they're just almost obstructed back behind trees and a, and a garage and whatnot. The only way you could see them, you have to go down clear to the end of that cul-de-sac, is that right, landowner? So, and your neighbor across the street has no concern about trucks there. So, uh, it was, it was enlightening to drive out and have a look at that. But before we, we, uh, take action here, I would encourage the, the operator over of our, of our screen to put up the picture of the aerial view.
We can do that for discussion.
Another question, um, we're a complaint-driven system, correct?
Correct.
You had a complaint from somebody in that area about the truck parking?
No, the Finney County Board of Zoning Appeals asked staff to go out and check on all, uh, conditional use permits that were requested, uh, for semi-truck and trailer parking. So, um, the FCBZ asked us to do that, so we compiled the list of all, uh, properties that have previously asked for a conditional use permit to park a semi-truck and trailer on their property, and then staff went out to make sure that they had what they were approved, if they weren't approved, that they weren't parking any out there.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
This will probably be the first of numerous that come to before us, I would guess, if you're checking them all.
Mm-hmm. Staff has already gone through and checked all the properties, and the ones that are not, um, in, uh, not complying with the conditional use permit, we're working through the process right now.
So we're, excuse me, are you?
Go ahead.
Well, just a follow-up question, Mr. Chairman. So are there several of those that you're working through the process?
Right now, I can only recall two that, um, are in violation of their conditional use permit or the zoning regulations.
About how many did you look at, or did staff look at?
Hmm, I believe there's approximately ten to fourteen that have been approved. I don't remember the exact number off the top of my head.
All right, uh, something else, Commissioner Reese?
I just might point out that, uh, you looked at not after five o'clock, correct?
We did not go after five o'clock. We went on a Friday afternoon.
Will probably make a huge difference on what you just said.
Well, that's, yeah, that's a good point, too. Yeah.
Okay, Dante, why don't you have Chair? We're gonna hear from the Chairman of the Planning Commission. Vicky's here. Morning.
Thank you, Chairman.
Public, who you are?
I'm Vicky Gurman, uh, Chairman of the Planning Commission. I think I could maybe shed a little bit more light on this. Um, as this request came to us, the, if we rezon, then the applicant's home would not be compliant with that zoning. So they would not be able to live in their home. So they would then have to get a conditional use permit for a night watchman quarters to live in their home. Um, so we were debating whether it should be done in the reverse, because if we rezon, then it's rezoned, and they can't undo it unless they pay and rezone it again. And if they were not granted the conditional use for their home, then that would be a challenge. So we debated, okay, do we try to get the conditional use first and then consider the rezone? Um, some of the things that came up with regard to rezoning was if that occurs, then are they going to have to improve the surface to park the trucks there? Uh, if it is rezoned, they could park multiple trucks. Um, that's not an issue, um, in the industrial, so that would not be a problem. But it might be cost prohibitive then for these folks to, uh, go that route. So we really were just trying to come up with what might be the best option for the applicant. Um, the applicant does own all of the properties at the end of that cul-de-sac. So that whole circle down there is their property. Um, and they just are going to continue, their plan is just to continue to park those few trucks. They do have, I believe it was crushed concrete, um, that they have.
Crushed asphalt.
It's, it's asphalt.
Crushed asphalt, okay, uh, for those trucks to park on. The neighbors didn't have any complaints. As a matter of fact, one of the neighbors came to us and said, you know, "We appreciate them because they maintain the road." Um, there, there were comments that the road is torn up more by like UPS and FedEx and, and other traffic than what it is by these trucks. I believe their trucks are only parked there a few months out of the year. Um, the rest of the time, like about nine months, I think they're on the road. So the trucks really aren't there that much. In essence, they've been really good neighbors. Um, the neighborhood really has no complaints. We were a, a little reluctant to rezon that one small portion, uh, to industrial, although it's acceptable. You can have industrial right next to residential, so, um, but we didn't feel, you know, real good about that option. So it was just a challenge for us. We kind of thought that maybe this would be a better option, um, to just grant them a waiver, uh, to allow them to continue doing, uh, what they've done over there. And the neighbors don't seem to have an issue with it. Um, I did not ask, um, the staff whether can conditions be put on a waiver? Is a waiver permanent? Does a waiver transfer to the next owner? Not sure about that.
Before you go, uh, Ms. Gurman, uh, any questions from the commissioners?
Yeah, I, I would like the, you know, if we put waivers on, if we put a sunset on, if long as ownership doesn't change or some, or they're, that would be my question.
All right.
And, well, and I do have one question for Vicky.
Okay, Vicky, hold on, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, and I don't know that it's a huge issue, but was safety in the conversation, uh, not just the traffic and condition of the road, but, and I don't know if there's any children or anything out in that neck of the woods either.
Yes, yes. As a matter of fact, that was a concern, and not a concern so much with the truck traffic, but with these people who have children, um, not being able to get out if there's like a big snowstorm or something like that. Um, you know, these people have been more than kind, uh, to clear that off and make sure that, that the, you know, folks can get in and out of there, so.
Yeah, I did read that.
There was, yeah, there was not really a concern for the traffic.
Thank you.
Are we done with?
One quick question. What is the road that's on the, uh, well, it's the left-hand side of my photo? Or the, I guess, the west side?
The west side is, um, Blacktop, it's.
Anderson?
Anderson Road.
Hmm, okay. I was trying to figure.
That would be why the road graders are slowly, slow to get down there to maintain that, because got Blacktop, they'd have to road on Blacktop quite a ways to grade a, what is that, less than a half mile? That, that cul-de-sac. And on the cul-de-sac, are there three, three houses total?
Three houses on the opposite side from us.
Yeah, so it's not, uh, not heavily populated.
Is there a county road on the south side of this photograph?
Not that I'm aware of, when I looked at it.
About the north. County road where, uh, Larry?
On the south side, to the bottom of the.
There's not a county road there. The other, the closest one for our road graders from there would be Catherine Drive, which is north of there. It goes behind J-Mark, so. And I, I apologize as, um, I honestly, with the changes that we've had, I honestly, until this issue came up, did not realize that, that that road was ours. So with the, the changes in personnel from above, so we will do a better job of maintaining that, so.
That's fine, because we do it anyway.
Right, but we'll make sure we're out there. We'll make sure we're out there more, because I didn't realize that that, I did not realize that was our road until this issue came up.
Questions for the commissioners? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll hear now from Dante, please. Couple of questions that I asked for you to address. Uh, can the waiver be granted with a provision if the property owner, if the property owner changes title in any fashion that the waiver is revoked?
I believe that'll be a question for a county council. Um, I'm not.
Regulations don't have anything on the waiver?
Nope.
Anybody else have any questions, again, for the planner? All right.
I, I, I do. Um, my understanding, if they do go to the industrial zoning route, they're not including the other lots that they own, just strictly the ones that are outlined on our screen.
Correct.
What would be the benefit of sending this back to the Board of Zoning Appeals to get a conditional use?
In, so if you send it back to the Board of Zoning Appeals for them to, um, get a conditional use permit for the night watchman's quarter, then, um.
Oh, conditional use to, uh, vary from rural residential to authorize parking more than.
Oh, back to the Planning Commission for the rezon? Is that what you're referring to?
Okay. What does it take to get, uh, conditional use for them to plant, to park more than two semis on this vehicle, on this?
It takes a waiver.
Correct. It would take a waiver. The Board of Zoning Appeals can't grant a conditional use permit to park any additional. Correct. It would take a waiver. The Board of Zoning Appeals can't grant a condition use permit to park any additional, any more than one semi truck and trailer on the property. The zoning regulations allow them only to grant up to one semi truck and trailer. If they work, if anyone wants any more, then they would have to either rezone the property or come before you guys for a waiver.
If we zoned it industrial, then can we give a conditional or, you know, conditional use for them to reside in the residence?
The Board of Zoning Appeals would grant that, yep.
Seems to me that the conditional use is the way to go. Waivers are hard for us to determine who's entitled to a waiver and who's not. Neighbors change. And ma'am, while you have great neighbors now who are all in favor of this, waivers just simply create problems. It seems to me that we could change to industrial and get a conditional use to allow occupancy in the home as, as a rural residence on a conditional use basis, unless I'm missing something.
What would, do you agree, excuse me, do you agree with that statement that he just said?
That they should, I wouldn't have, the Planning Commission would need to make the determination if it's the right choice to rezone the property. Staff at that did not recommend approval of the rezone to the I-1, I-2 district.
That's my question.
So, if they rezone the property in industrial and commercial zone properties, they would need to hire a licensed design professional in the case that they add on to their home if they lay any concrete or any type of improvements that are done to the property. That then becomes more costs that they incur when they're trying to do things to the home or lay concrete or anything like that.
But it would be done according to a conditional use. It'd be zoned industrial with a conditional use to be occupied as a residence.
Correct, a night, a night watchman's court is correct.
Well, that can be waived by us, right?
I think that, yes, it would come before you guys again to waive the.
Then it would be according to a conditional use with a waiver of a not one night watchman house. Which is pretty easy for me to stomach. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So Dante, the, the reason staff did not recommend rezoning was?
The, so that use doesn't necessarily conform with the rest of the uses that are on that block at Mason Court. There was also concerns that, you know, when they sell the property, that property is I-1, I-2. So, any future property owner could come in and do any of the uses on that lot.
Not just the semi trailer?
Yep, correct.
Gives me a better understanding. Thank you. That's, that's where I'd fall. If, if, if we grant the waivers, then we can put stipulations on the waivers that if ownership changes, then, then the waivers go away. But if we rezone it, then it's rezoned. We don't have a lot of use. I mean, it looks to me like that boxes the owners in more.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Sad thing is that we haven't all driven out and had a look at that. Like I said, you cannot see where those semis are parked unless you go, go down to the end of that cul-de-sac and make a turnaround. With that in mind, and because I'm not running for reelection again, I'm gonna offer a motion to grant the waiver as requested. The only question I would have is, is there compelling reasoning behind limiting the number of semis in that waiver? They've got four, but maybe they wanna add the fifth one. The property owner wants to speak, Mr. Chairman, so.
Well, why don't we hear from the property owner, please? Please announce yourself for the viewing public. Oh, you, you get the microphone.
Marilyn Olly Stavell. On that drawing there, it shows three trucks and trailers. There would be our truck and trailer and two other truck and trailers and a trailer, which makes three trailers, owned by Shane Armstrong. He's the one that has the loader. He's the one that cleans the road, puts down the crushed asphalt by mailboxes, driveways, everything to help them out. In the snowstorms, if it snows bad like it has, if an ambulance wants to get down there, they're not getting down there until he comes and plows that out. And he does it for other businesses through town. We're not charged anything. Alls he says is, can we park there? Because he lives over there where there's this much space between houses. But the thing is, we would even say, put it, put the trucks in his name so that you know nobody else is parking there. Check whenever you want to. Our goal is not to have other people park on that property. But because he is so helpful, my husband has gone at least a week at a time. If he gets 24 hours home, I have to reintroduce myself. And Shane has his trucks gone anywhere is from six to nine months when he's out in the fields. But when he is there, he's the one that helps me when I'm home by myself because there's always something that happens in a house. And he's the first one to step up to the plate and help me. All of the neighbors, the three neighbors, they moved in at separate times. Before they signed any papers to buy the property, I personally said, before you move in here, this is a truck area. That means there's cattle trucks and grain haulers going every which way. And at the end of the road, there's the garage that repairs them. I says, if you're afraid, afraid you can't put up with that, I just wanna let you know ahead of time. No, we don't care. We're moving out here because it's in the country and we have more power over what we can do. So, they were all made aware of it. They all agreed to it with no problem before they ever signed papers on the house. There's no way we want anybody else's trucks parked there. I don't like having strangers around me when I'm by myself so much. Doesn't say I couldn't take care of myself if I wake up and somebody's in the house. But there's other things I can't do. And if I fell and broke a hip or something and I'm by myself and that road can't have an ambulance come down it, then I'm gonna have to crawl out to Anderson Road. Anderson Road is the non-stop trucks, tankers, cattle haulers, grain haulers. They all up and down and up and down. Anderson Road gets to be a mess. But it gets fixed. We fix it where it goes Mason Court to Anderson Road. Okay, we, it gets to be a big mammoth mud hole. That's why we put the crushed asphalt there. Maybe a no-no, but we did it anyway for the families that's on there. Now, there's, and the kids that are there, the little kids, I keep reminding them, keep them kids out of the road. The mailman goes down there and literally goes doesn't look for kids or animals, whatever. I've jumped on him, too. Because I don't wanna have to see an ambulance come and take one of the kids. But the neighbors are all doing good at keeping them in the yard, which to me, that's the best thing there is. On the other side of us, to the north, I think it is, there's garrisons who is definitely your cars and trucks banged up, what have you. And as I look out my kitchen window, the people behind us, we've been there for over 12 years. There has always been trucks parked there. The place was sold. The people that bought it now have trucks and it's all family trucks. Good, they're trying to make a living. If you go out and try to find a place to park your trucks, it's next to impossible. And what they charge is outrageous. Truck drivers don't make that much money. If we were to get it switched over to the industrial, they said it would take a good hundred thousand dollars to get that property compatible to industrial. Plus, I'd have to have somebody staying in my house that we pay taxes on, big taxes. And I can't do that. There's no way I could have somebody staying in my house. If I could, I'd rent it to them and say, hey, I need an income. But I have a bad case of anxiety and to know somebody was that close, I couldn't handle it. So, that's why we're going for the waiver. We cannot afford a hundred thousand dollars. We cannot say, okay, well, let him park his truck someplace else and still help you. Well, he's not gonna do that because he's got other businesses to do and he's doing this because we're letting him park there. Common sense says that's the best way to help. And I know over on the other side of us, there's all kinds of trucks parked there. Well, yeah, they got this big garage and people go there besides the one that's at the end of the road to get their trucks repaired. The only time they can do this is on weekends because the trucks have to be out on the road. So, no, I'm saying, let them park there. They don't bother me. They're doing what they have to to support their families. That's what we wanna do. And we wanna help the neighborhood, which we've been doing. We've been, he's been parking there for three years and nobody has said anything. We take and we make sure that them roads are cleared. He comes in there and trucks go right? No. We tell everybody, you slow it down and they do it. So, that's, that's what we're going for.
All right, we appreciate that. As a summation, at the request of Commissioner Dries, we're gonna hear from Mackenzie. Commissioner Dries, you have a question?
Mackenzie, this is in the development area of the city or is this strictly a county issue that we're gonna face many times in your tenure here?
So, this is within the county. This is not within the city. It's in.
Development area.
We don't have a predetermined development area, like official one. This is like within the area, I believe, and Alicia can say a little bit more. I believe that this is within the growth comprehensive plan area. So, she can say any more about that if, if I'm wrong. But, yeah, it is identified within their comprehensive plan of possibility for future growth, so.
Your take on all this, like I say, this is not a unique situation. This is a very common situation. They just happen to be an example.
Yeah.
We've run across this, seems like every year somewhere. Do you have a particular opinion on this?
We've had a lot of issues with truck parking in the, in the county, as you've been well aware of. Multiple people have come up before you before and, and talked about it. And it is an issue that the Board of Zoning Appeals also is, is looking at and that's why they did request staff to look back on these conditional use permits that have been given for truck parking to see if they are following in compliance. This area, I agree with staff on their, their recommendation that they gave to the Planning Commission because it does, if somebody wanted to, in the future, have a huge trucking business or any other kind of industrial use there, there's nothing restricting them. And yes, this area is identified as a mixed of commercial, industrial and residential within the comprehensive plan. And there is some commercial there and industrial to the south. But this property really doesn't have any actual industrial zone around it that's touching it, like immediately adjacent. So, this would be kind of like a spot zoning.
This is some of my thoughts. While I have the microphone, I'm gonna use it. My understanding is this is probably taxed at presidential rate, 11%. It goes to industrial. The tax appraisals will jump to 30% on business properties. Is that probably a fair statement, guys? And then put that extra tax burden along with the improvements, I can see how the landowner cannot, does not want to go industrial. I really can.
And.
I guess I would lean towards Larry's thing with conditional use that can be jerked if the ownership changes.
A waiver that could be jerked?
Correct.
Put stipulations on the waiver, that's what I was.
Yeah, that's what you're trying to say and I think I agree with that, Larry, because financially, if this goes industrial, the taxes will.
And if you sell it to a new property owner in the area and they wanna put in a huge trucking deal, they can go through the steps and get it rezoned and re-make a qualify.
And if I'm, I, I believe that this is correct, but the appraisal of the property isn't determined by the zoning. So, even if they're still using it for parking trucks, they might, I don't know what their appraisal would be. They might determine it a certain way.
Their home would change.
Possibly.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Where you turned off of Anderson Road to get on to this cul-de-sac is a truck repair facility. I don't know how it's zoned. You turn in through a bunch of semis out of, at a repair facility and then you get on this gravel. I guess it's a county road. So, I'll, I'll restate my motion. I've moved to grant the waiver.
Any restrictions?
Just as a, as a point from other properties, whether they were grandfathered in before the zoning was in place or otherwise, if we're going to, right now, the neighbors don't have any problem with it. They, some could in the future. If you have a specific number for the trucks that you're going to allow on it, it leads to more clarity when it, when or if there were any complaints in the future. So, if you had that on there, that would be beneficial.
That was why, Karen, I'm sorry to interrupt. It's why I was asking, is there a plan to add more semis? There, there are three semis plus an extra trailer now. But what if somebody else comes along and they wanna park there? Do we wanna prevent that or allow it? It's, it's concealed around the corner. So, I'm not opposed to, to granting a waiver that limits the number of units that can park there. But I'd turn to somebody else for guidance on that.
I think what we want to do is make sure that our motion is clear as to the limitations of the waiver.
And if your limitation is going to be that it's restricted to this property owner, my suggestion would be to file that waiver with the Register of Deeds so it's clear in any title search if they were going to sell it, that someone isn't coming in thinking that they can do exactly what they were doing. And it would be clear, too, whether it's unlimited trucks or if you limited to the amount. I just, it, it's more about, for my end of it, it's more about clarity so that we, it's easier for enforcement on the other end of it as well.
I believe, Commissioner Jones, that your motion is, is that you move to grant a waiver for the subject property for the parking of no more than three semi trailers with trucks attached and one trailer per the description on this page as presented. And with a further condition that this waiver is effective for the present landowners only and no successors or assigns of any kind.
It almost is not quite what I said, but. No, it's not even close. That's why you haven't got a second yet, sir. I'll, I'll, I'll agree in my motion to limit that to the present landowner. But I, I still have an issue over the number. What if the one, whoever owns the, the truck, they decide they've got, what do they have, cattle trailer now or a grain trailer?
Ours is a paddle and the other two are grains.
So, what if your truck, you decide also you want a whole grain and you get another trailer and wanna park it in there, so.
One of ours, he's not getting another truck.
Okay. So, you're happy with leaving it with three semis? All right, then.
Ma'am, it, we have a viewing public and they can't hear you. So, if you would come up and address your answers into the microphone, it'd be greatly appreciated. Would you repeat your statement with regard to the question from Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, no, he's not getting another truck. I'll make that clear. But one of the stipulations could be that it's only our truck and the trucks for Shane Armstrong, who is the one that does the work on the road. We just buy the material. And then that way, say, he decides to go someplace else, another truck cannot come in.
You'd be happy with that?
I sure would. I didn't even want him parking there, but it was worked out good.
All right. We can limit this waiver to the present vehicles that are parked there, that do park there.
Well, Mr. Chairman, as we do not have a second yet and we're in discussion about this, if we have the last. if we have the last part of your, the motion that you've suggested, that it's limited to this landowner and it's filed as our council has recommended to us, then I don't have a problem with the number of trucks and trailers. Because if it changes ownership, that's, the waiver's going to be done. So, I'm okay with just simply saying the waiver and it's attached to the current owner.
I have a second.
Well, I mean, and not worry about the number of, of trucks.
You're not running for reelection again either, so.
But some of us don't want to have daily or monthly or bimonthly waivers for truck parking.
No, I get that.
And I, I think what Commissioner Pissney is stating, it would be easier to maintain. If ownership changes, then, then the waiver goes away.
I'm agree, I, I can agree with that.
You know, let the owner determine how many trucks and trailers come in and go, and that's, that's more their decision than ours.
Well, but in my opinion, limiting it to what's requested provides some degree of certainty in the future that the other landowners who provided their consents to the Planning Commission because there was only three trucks and one other trailer being parked there.
That's a valid point.
Which they can't see from their place anyway.
But my point is, is that, that, that's what they provided to the Planning Commission. We shouldn't be expanding on what their consent was about. Secondly, you start parking dead animal trucks there and the neighbors may not really like it. And there wouldn't be anything anybody could do about it under this present waiver as suggested in the motion. So, I'm, I'm not in favor of granting a blanket request. I want restrictions that apply to this landowner. That was part of the consent of the joining landowners because right now, everybody's happy with it. And what I don't want to do is have one of these a month because our zoning restrictions in rural residential is the one truck or two trucks total. So, what's the remedy? This is like making sausage, gentlemen.
Well, let's just put it, the number of trucks and trailers at five and go on down the road and put that in the waiver along with ownership change.
Maximum trucks and trailers?
Yes.
I'll alter my motion. I, I think we've probably discussed this about as much as it needs to be discussed. Yeah, it's a, it's a precedent. I agree, but...
So, your motion then just...
Grant the waiver for the property owner only. Upon the change of ownership, the waiver goes away. And, and I'll be happy to include the, the remarks up to five semi-type units.
I would second that motion.
Sorry, is that five trucks and five trailers or just for...
Semi-units. Semi-units is a truck and a trailer. Does Kara get to draw this up all official like?
Well, that therein lies the problem, is that our motion presently is for five trucks limited to this landowner. And to cause a copy of this motion to be properly drawn up, verified and recorded of record and indexed to the subject property has to be, in my opinion, included in the motion. So, we can vote on the present motion and second that are before the commission, or we can...
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move to amend the motion to state that legal counsel can put all those particulars you just mentioned into the motion under discussion.
She'll want a pay raise after all of that.
Is there a motion to the amendment, or I mean, a second to the amendment?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to cause counsel to draft a specific motion to include the restrictions along with the filing requirement and the change of ownership requirement. Give her an opportunity to do that, and we'll circle back to this. Any other discussion?
On the amendment.
On the amendment.
Yep.
All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Most, amendment carries. So, Madam Counselor, would you draft this before the end of the session today? And we will vote then on the waiver at that time. Landowners, I know that you wanted to have a decision today. I think I made it for you. But I want the motion to be specific so that it can be recorded of record and restricted only to you and your husband.
So, do we need a motion on the amended, I mean, a vote on the amended motion?
As drafted by counsel, then we'll vote on it.
Then, oh, okay, you're reserving that to, at that time. Okay, I just...
Sure you wanted to make her do it today and not...
Oh, she got this whipped out. It won't take very long. Okay. No heat, like flying, solo. Make it work. Well, since we're with the county counselor, moving down our agenda.
Contract?
We have an NDS contract to review.
Over a series of a couple of years, we have been working on the Neighborhood and Development Services contract with the city of Garden City. We have the final version of that with the exhibit attached as to the immediate urban growth zone outlined for that. You can either approve the contract as is presented now or not approve it and send it back for additional changes at this point in time. We do know that we have representatives from the city here if the commission has any questions for them as well.
My question to you is, do we have the exhibit map worked out?
The exhibit map is attached to the final version that was sent out to all commissioners.
And also, for clarification, the effective date of the new NDS agreement is July 1, 2025 to accommodate us with the lack of staff.
The effective date of the new agreement is January 1 of 2025. Within the agreement itself, it calls for a transition period. Essentially, that the, the new, the, the new way of things going forward will start in July. But the contract itself and the effective date of the contract is January 1, 2025 for all purposes as far as when it starts and when any triggering dates for whether termination or otherwise, as far as that goes. So, the effective date is January 1, 2025.
Right. What I do want to know, note for the viewing public is the accommodation by the city management and hopefully, according to their commissioners of our request, to extend the timeframe for the implementation to July 1, 2025 to give us an additional chance to get adequate staff secured. Recognize that accommodation and, and thank the city and its staff for that effort. Appreciate it. Danielle, if you're carrying the mail, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the counselor with regard to this final draft, the NDS agreement, which has been hammered out in less than five months with the chair's direction? While it's languished far too long, we did get it done. County counselor may state at what price or what cost. My remark from the chair is, is that this is just a beginning of some really collaborative work that is going to be continued to be important between the city and the county, not just in the NDS Department of efficient government, but also in the areas of repurposing the LEC, providing that space for continued law enforcement being together, both Sheriff's Office and Police Department, and also in the construction of a new county facility or jail. These are major issues between the two government bodies. And I appreciate the work that was done to bring this to a conclusion in, in what I believe is short order. Any other comments from the counselor with regard to the NDS?
Not at this time, no.
Do you recommend that we pass the NDS agreement as presented?
I believe that at this particular point in time, that we have everything within this agreement that, that we have asked for and it's, in its best state at this point.
Okay, my question to you was rather direct. Do you recommend that we pass the NDS agreement or not?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept the agreement and, and approve it to be submitted to the city.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to approve the agreement, and the chair asks the counselor again, do you recommend this agreement be signed?
Yes.
Very good. Any other discussion on the motion? If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Most, motion carries. Want to thank Kara and Robert Reese, Jenny Newberry, and McKenzie Phillips for their hard work in bringing this agreement to finalization and await the city's final action to get this approved. Anything else on the NDS agreement? Did I miss anybody on, Robert from county that had input on this? Okay, we'll next hear from the Finney County Economic Development Corp., London Devall, President.
Good morning, gentlemen. London Devall, President and CEO of Finney County Economic Development Corporation. Quick monthly update for you, pretty timely. We've been working with a truck wash that is looking to locate out in the county and helping them get through that process. We have also asked them to consider utilizing some additional property to allow for fenced, secured truck parking so that we can help to alleviate some of these challenges that we've had for years with truck parking. Obviously, trucking is extremely important to our economy, and we certainly need to do what we can. I consider truck drivers, even though they may be independent or only have one or two trucks, those are each independent businesses. And I feel like we should be doing our part to help ensure that they can run their businesses with as little challenge as possible. So, we will continue to work on that. Hopefully, we'll be able to get that done with this project. Also, been working on some housing projects. For the first time in many, many years, we have a developer considering some li-tech, which is low-income housing tax credit programs. That type of housing has been a challenge to get developed just because those are very, very competitive tax credits for those projects. But they are looking, and we've had them already visit the community, met with the city staff, and identified a couple of properties that would work well for them. We've now been able to talk to the landowners and hopefully, we'll be able to, to get some agreements made on that so we can at least apply and hopefully get some of that housing in place. While we don't have a huge demand for the lower-end housing like that, we believe that by opening some of that up, it'll allow us to create some more openings in some of the higher-priced housing as well. Four-year programming, Newman University continues to grow their enrollment. They're up to over 60 students in their four-year programming now, which is very exciting. Continue to offer the scholarships so that they are, there are many, many of those students who are able to attend for less than $1,000 a semester, which is pretty crazy, and stay in the community.
Newman are teachers, are they not?
There are several in the teacher program, which is amazing because we need all of those that we can get. But yes, we also have business students enrolled and some of the are into BSN, which is also very important. Most of the hospitals in the area are requiring BSNs now, so it's very beneficial to have that available for our, our community. Working on a lot of commercial projects, some retail, good retail projects that I think folks will be very excited about when those come to fruition. Also, working on some large renewable projects out in the county. Those will take some time to get through the process, but should end up being good projects for our community. A couple of large industrial projects, an existing manufacturer that we're working with on a, a pretty significant expansion. And we have a fifth week meeting on Monday, next Monday. So, you'll all receive your invitation to that. And if there are particular items that you'd like to discuss during that, feel free to bring those items with you.
Any other questions or comments to the economic development?
Quick question. On the renewables, are there any new players involved in this? Or is this the ones that we've already are aware of? And what is their feelings on the status in the, in DC? If the politics change, do they have any, have they expressed their, are they going with their projects?
As of now, yes. Companies feel pretty confident moving forward. Right now, there is such a huge demand on our electrical infrastructure to allow for the additional data storage and data capacity that we have in this country that it really doesn't matter whose politics you're following. We're going to have to have more generation of electricity. And quite frankly, as long as nobody wants a nuclear reactor in their backyard, renewables is where that growth is going to lie. We simply don't have the, the capacity to add much additional besides natural gas. And there's, there's just not a real desire to go online with a bunch of additional fossil fuel power generation, really independent of who wins the election. So, I would anticipate that those renewable projects will move forward unless, as a country, we think it's a good idea to have all of our data being processed in other countries. I do not, so.
All right, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now hear from Stephanie Roush. Adult outcomes.
Good morning, Stephanie Roush, Deputy Director of Community Corrections and Youth Services. This morning, I am seeking signatory approval for our FY 24 year-end outcomes for both Community Corrections and Youth Services. Annually, we submit these to Kansas Department of Corrections, KDOC, to let them know our progress from the prior year. For our adult outcomes, what we do every year, we come up with some goals that cover gaps and deficiencies we may see as an agency. And then we work on that year, closing those gaps and how we can improve for the next year. So, for one of our goals, it's to reach a 75% success rate for all adults on probation. We did reach a 66% success rate. We think part of that's contributed to having low, low staff, not very frequent training with KDOC and large caseload sizes. For FY 25, we do have funds available for more staff, and we're looking at getting more frequent training from the state so those officers can spend more time with the clients. With the success rate, those are clients that completed and they did not go to prison. And we also looked at the amount of absconders that we have on probation. So, those are those clients that just stopped showing up for whatever reason. And so, we looked to see if we could find any trends on this. So we looked to see if we could find any trends on this. We couldn't really narrow it down to one item, but for FY '25, we're going to continue to look at those trends, and then hopefully with more staff, we can get lower caseload sizes and really spend more time with those clients to ensure that they are following all of their conditions of probation. Do you have any questions on the adult community corrections?
When we don't hit our success goal, is the state penalize this in any way financially or anything like that?
They haven't directly said that it does penalize it. I'm sure at some point it could affect, but that's why we're really working for getting good training, spending more time with those clients, to see how we can close that loop to have a better success rate.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Other questions for Stephanie as to the adult corrections year-end summary? It's set for approval by the chairperson for signature.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept the fiscal year 2024 year-end adult outcomes and authorize you to sign. Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve fiscal year '24 Community Corrections year-end outcome, and the chair to sign. Further discussion, Commissioner Reese?
No. Nope.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most, motion carries. Please continue with Youth Services year-ends, Stephanie.
Okay, and now for FY '24 outcomes, we have several different departments within Youth Services. For our juvenile intake and assessment, we are really, really working on gaining some part-time employees. When we are looking at that position, it's better suited for part-time. We did get two part-time officers for, so for FY '25, we're going to continue to get a couple more part-time officers to help cover different time ranges and days for people to work. For our juvenile probation, we wanted to get a list of mental health resources out to our youth, so they, we can ensure that they have services readily available, that they can contact to get those services to help them be successful. And we did hand those out to all parents, guardians, and youth, and will continue to do that for FY '25, because that's a valuable resource for them. For their success rate, they did have a 79% success rate, so they did go over the state's 75%. So for FY '25, we'll just try to continue to increase that success number or maintain it. For immediate intervention program, IIP, we have what's called a multidisciplinary team, MDT. And each county within our jurisdiction has a MDT board. We're working on FY '25 to try to reengage those MDT boards. That way, those youth can go in front of them if necessary. And then for IIP, they did have a 77% success rate for FY '24, so they reached the state's 75 and exceeded that. Any questions on Youth Services?
I don't see any motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we direct you to sign the '25, or the 2024 year-end outcomes for the youth district. Second.
Seconded to approve the 2024 Youth Services year-end outcomes, and the chair to sign. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most, motion carries.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
All right, next we'll hear from Kelly Munyon, Director of Human Resources, with regard to the GrowWell contract renewal.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a continuation from the item that was tabled on the 10-7 meeting, asking for consideration of an extension to the current contract between Revere Healthcare Solutions, also known as GrowWell Clinic, and Finney County, for employees, retirees, and dependents enrolled in the group medical plan, for in-person clinic services, primary care, urgent care, wellness, nutritional counseling, screenings, and workers' compensation. We also have telemedicine-based mental health services available to all. The in-person clinical services with RHS GrowWell Clinic began November 1st, 2021, and it is expiring November 1st of 2024. The alternative is before you this morning, and the county counselor did review and recommend some updates. Those updates were approved by GrowWell and made in the contract that was attached to your agenda item. So this morning, the alternatives are to authorize the extension of a one-year contract as presented, authorize the extension of a three-year contract as presented, or decline the renewal of the one and three-year, and direct staff on alternatives for an employee clinic. Staff recommends option two, authorizing the extension of a three-year contract with Revere Healthcare Solutions in Finney County, and authorizing the board or Mr. Reese to sign the contract.
Kelly, the fiscal impact on the three-year is already predetermined. There is, is there an escalator clause or anything that they can do in the contract that they could get out of that, or?
I believe, no. I believe that was, I think that was around a 3%.
Excuse me, right, just over 3.5%.
3.
Up for you.
Yeah. Yep.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Kelly or Robert, one of the other, in my tenure on the commission, a number of things have been attempted in order to save taxpayers' money for healthcare for our employees. Years back, they all, the employees just went to the emergency room or their doctor's office. That was costly. Then, we had a clinic for employees at the Health Department, and that, I think, went about three years and was finally abandoned for lack of participation. So, in short, can you kind of sum up, what does this contract that we presently have do to save the taxpayers' money? Can you sort of share how it compares to what we had some years back?
Right, so we had very little utilization with the internal employee clinic, and for many different reasons. I think we had around 30 employees, dependents, retirees using that. To date, we have, excuse me, I believe it's around 470 employees, dependents, retirees, out of the 530-some on the plan utilizing the employee clinic, and we are over 7,200 visits at this time. So taking that times, I mean, I don't know, I just know what I spend it, you know, my doctor's office, $150 or $225, depending on what kind of doctor you see. There is a savings here, it's not hitting the health plan, and I think after, you know, a few years of utilizing it, we'll start to realize those savings.
So not as an HR director, but as a taxpayer, do you recommend that we pass the longer?
Absolutely, I do, yeah. Yep. GrowWell has been very well received, and it's utilized quite a bit.
I'm prepared to offer a motion when you're prepared to accept, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Any other questions from the Commissioners with regard to this contract as proposed and recommended?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would just ask our administrator if he has any additional comments to what Kelly has provided us with this recommendation.
No, I think the program has really worked out quite well for the county, and especially for the employees. It's a very stable benefit that we provide to the employees, and as Kelly has reported, substantial increase in utilization. So hopefully that'll continue to place in check some of the maybe more severe illnesses and so forth, go unchecked, because, you know, they haven't, they didn't get proper care, so.
An emergency room and so forth. Mr. Chairman, if the estimates of 7,200 visits, that's less than $60 a visit, that's pretty economical, appears to me.
I agree. Your motion, sir.
My motion, Mr. Chairman, is to authorize the extension of the contract for three years as presented.
And authorize the administrator to sign?
Yeah.
I would second that motion.
That's been moved and seconded to do the three-year contract as presented, authorize the administrator to sign. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most, motion carries.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, you are up with regard to the designation of voting delegates for the upcoming Kansas Association of Counties annual meeting.
Good morning, Commissioners. So the 49th Annual Kansas Association of Counties Conference is coming up, and during that conference, they will hold their annual meeting. During the annual business meeting, that'll happen on the last day of the conference. Each member county is allowed to vote. This year, they will be voting on 2025 legislative policy, as well as a KAC bylaws change. A voting delegate must be designated no later than Friday, November 22nd. A first and second alternate is not required, but it is recommended to assign those. This year, they're doing things a little differently, so delegates are going to have to have a mobile device, because they will be doing an electronic vote, as opposed to a hand raising or what they've done in the past. So that's really the only requirement. The other requirement is that the voting delegate and alternates are in a, either elected officials or in a position appointed by the commission. I'm not sure, I forgot to ask Commissioner Pishney if he was going, but I know that he usually does attend the KAC conference.
Well, I have, but because I'm going to be leaving this commission, I think someone else from the commission should attend, but the other part is a very practical thing. I'm to be in Topeka for two, three days of orientation that same week, so.
Very well.
I may crash the party at the end of the, at the end of it, but I don't know that I'd be there in time to vote.
Okay. I just know that you are typically our go-to for that voting delegate assignment. So without Commissioner Pishney, those that I know that are attending that meet the criteria would be County Administrator Robert Reese, County Counselor Kara Schartz, Register of Deeds Stephanie Shockley, and County Appraiser Maria Castillo. Those are the four that I'm aware of that will be attending at this time.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would just simply echo something you said. I think it is good to have an alternative, an alternate delegate illness, whatever it might be, could arise, so I think it's good to have a delegate and an alternate.
Do you want a second alternate or not?
I mean, that's up to you, you guys, but I just.
You've attended more of these than.
Well, I'm just saying.
Almost anybody else here, what would you, what would you recommend?
I'm just saying, you need to have at least one more than the delegate because of unforeseen things.
You need a motion, Mr. Chairman?
I do. You choose out of the four that are eligible for appointment that we know that are going, and also name your, your first alternate.
Okay, I would move that we appoint our administrator, Robert Reese, as the delegate, and as our alternate, I'll nominate the counselor.
Kara.
Miss Kara Schartz.
All right, that's your motion. Is there a second?
No, second.
Been moved and seconded to appoint Robert Reese as the delegate for the county at the KAC annual meeting with first alternate delegate Kara Schartz, County Counselor. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most, motion carries.
Okay, I will be certifying those designations electronically this year, and so Mr. Reese and Ms. Schartz should get an email regarding that. Thank you.
All right. I'm sure, but you're still up for upcoming events, Madam Clerk.
So this time, I did add some things that are coming up after the first of the year, so you'll see some January 2025. We'll have new commissioner orientation, middle of January, January 15th through 17th. Local Government Day will take place in Topeka on January 22nd, and then County Day at the Capitol will take place on February 6th. And then in April, there will be the Kansas County Commissioners Association Annual Conference. Just put those on your schedule, so you would have those on your radar. Other than that, I would like to mention that early voting started this morning. I believe we had about 40 voters in the first 35 minutes, so people are excited. Early voting does take place here every day for the next two weeks, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and then we do have October 29th, where we will see voters until 7:00 PM. And on Saturday, November 2nd, we will be here from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM to receive voters.
All right. Thank you very much for your office's effort in making sure that we have safe and secure elections, and also availability to vote at the voters' convenience. From the chair's perspective, there's no excuse why persons haven't exercised their right to vote. The next thing.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
There is a meeting that's not on here, the Library Board, a public meeting, is tonight at 5:00.
All right, very good. Okay, we'll move on to staff reports. We'll hear from the Fire Department on the monthly reports.
Kenny Smith, Garden City Fire Department. First off, it's been a while since I've been up here. In July, we transitioned from our old reporting system to a new reporting system, and to get stats and everything like that, it kind of bumped us back a couple of months. But, and it's different paperwork that you guys can see. As far as August and September, what you guys have in front of you, the majority of calls, again, are going to be EMS-related, whether it's going to be an assist for them or an accident, like an auto accident or anything like that. The Garden City Township holding the most of them, as far as the calls that we go to. Other than that, not really any big fires that we've had. We've had grass fires and trash fires. We urge people to call in, and just so we can get information, so we don't have to go out there. If there is smoke in the air, typically we go, but if there's a controlled burn that's been called in, then it kind of alleviates that as far as us going out there. And a lot of times, it's just people that don't call in, or if we don't have anybody in the office and nobody answers, and they go ahead and burn, then we'll go and see them. Other than that, there wasn't really anything big. I'll take any questions if you have any questions.
Questions for Fire Department? I do have a comment, not a question, sir. We came out and toured the new fire station and EMS facility.
Yes, sir.
Really appreciated the time that you and the chief put in to making us, number one, feel welcome, and two, all the information that you and the chief provided. I just wanted to say thanks.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Anything else?
Likewise, thanks, and you.
I was just going to echo that, yeah.
Are planning on opening Fire Station 3 in July of this year?
Right now, so it was slated in July, and Crossland, and all of the contractors are really doing a good job, and I believe it's slated right now for the beginning of June, and we see that date to move forward most likely as we move in, because there should be getting dried in probably this month, if not early next month, and then it's just all inside work, so.
Thank you, Kenny.
Yep.
No, I was just echoing, the thanks, and I appreciated the emphasis, if you will, with regard to the education portion of that fire station going forward as well.
Yep. All right, thank you.
Thank you. We'll hear a development update from Mackenzie Phillips.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Mackenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator. I have a few updates for you this morning, first, starting with Country Acres. The contractor is back in town, I talked to him last week. He is anticipating to be out there in the next couple of weeks to make, or to address some of the outstanding items that we have on, that the developer has to complete before we accept the infrastructure. So, once he is ready to go out there, he is going to give my department a call, so we can go out there and go over all of the areas with him. Moving, so moving on to Randal Estates, the street signs have been installed by Public Works staff, and the, currently, it is on schedule to be on the next agenda. is on schedule to be on the next agenda for the, to come before you at the county commission meeting, and I believe that's November fourth. So, that will, to be before you to accept the infrastructure for Randal Estates.
Wonderful. It's good to get that one done.
Yes.
Questions for Mackenzie? Oh, you had another. Go ahead.
Yes. We have one more item, and I have C.W. Harper here with Kirk and Michael to give an update on the urban area boundary for KDOT.
C.W. Harper with Kirk and Michael. Every ten years, the county's urban areas over ten thousand have to update their urban area boundaries. The city sent us this map, which is their proposed update to the urban area boundaries. The urban area boundaries are largely a planning function. There's not a whole lot of commitment or anything to you guys. The only financial impact is these roads are within the urban boundary are considered urban, and if you have a bridge on those, it's not considered for the KDOT Off-System Funding System. That said, there are no additional bridges in the expansion area, so there's no real impact to you guys with this expansion of the urban area boundaries.
Questions for the engineer?
All right.
Thank you.
Yep.
Go ahead, Mackenzie. This photograph that we're looking at, the UAB map?
Yes.
I didn't see it in our packet. Could you do me a favor and...
Send a separate email.
Yeah, his email that I was...
Yes, we can send it to you. Yep. And it's the, just for clarification, the areas that are like in that pink shade are the areas that are proposed to be added to the area.
Anything else, Mackenzie?
That's time.
Questions for the planner?
All right. With regard to Country Acres, it was discussed during planning that we had some issues there. Is that a design problem, or is that not meeting the specifications in the approved district, Country Acres?
So, everything was built to what was approved on the plans, but as the, since that soil is very sandy up there, it has been hard for the developer to be able to grow vegetation in the ditches. So, we had a lot of issues, or seen a lot of issues with erosion, and so that's really what we want to get. We want to get that reestablished and in good working order before it comes to you to accept that infrastructure. There is severe erosion over near the detention pond, retention pond. One of the concrete inlets that goes into that pond, it is eroding underneath that concrete, and we really want to get that built back up before we accept it, so that it doesn't cause any issues in the future.
All right. Let's make sure that if there's a problem with design, that it gets addressed before we accept it.
Yes.
All right. Anything else for Mackenzie? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. We'll go to the Administrator. Do you have anything in department reports or yourself that we need to address, sir?
Sorry.
You have a mic.
Yes. Nothing in the department reports, just a few updates. A lot of things going on. Last Monday was Employee in Service Day. Went very well. Want to thank the Commissioners for taking time and coming out and sharing breakfast, and getting to see some of the speakers as well. So, turned out quite well. Just keeps getting better on an annual basis. Hats off to the committee that put that on. Was about a dozen people or more, representation from all of the departments. So, turned out quite well. Next, commission meeting on the Fourth of November. We'll have a proclamation. Remember that that is Operation Green Light, and it is in reference to Veterans Day and so forth. So, this year, I've asked Sandra Kendall to head that up, and so she's doing a good job with that. So, we'll have additional lighting and so forth, a service tree as well. We'll be down in the lobby. So, let's see. Last week, had chamber breakfast. Let's see. Met with the, met with the appraiser last week, so I could clarify some TIF processes with her. Did have a meeting for Sewer District Number Four and getting that moving, and spoke briefly about connections and fees. We'll move forward on the petition for the creation of that district. We talked about going back with our original plan. We'll reach out to the county's Bond Council to craft that petition. If you recall, the original plan was to put place both the industrial district in that, as well as the Western Kansas Corridor in that entire district, so that we can build some efficiencies there, and just get rid of that obstacle right up front. Courthouse elevator, as of October fifteenth, we did get approval on that. There's a couple of outstanding items that I'll work with County Counselor on to get the contractor back out here to fix those two items. Hopefully, no, hopefully, no stumbling block in regards to that. On the seventeenth, we had our quarterly entity meeting at the Chamber. That's made up of city, county, and school districts, and economic development, hospital, just providing updates on what's going on in their particular area. We did take striping bids, or bid. We did have two bids on pavement striping. Katie will come back with his recommendations, probably next meeting. It may be subject to the commission's approval, and it was budgeted. We'll just, if it's over a certain amount, we'll have to come to you for approval. If not, we'll just get it going.
Commissioner Jones wants the striping done, so we better get it done.
And that's why we're doing it. Sewer District, Sewer District Modernization Project, did get a weekly update last week, and from now until the completion of that project, which is the end of January, we will have weekly updates on that. The project does seem to be going, moving right along. LEC programming process, we met with the, internally, we met with the architect, Sean Harding, to review some of the preliminary results of that. We will have a full committee update on that on the Fourth in the afternoon, approximately one-thirty, I think, is when that's scheduled. This week, we have three of the administrators from the Sheriff's Office that is touring three different jail facilities, just to look at their operations and so forth, maybe glean additional ideas as they try and finalize the programming process. Health Department EMS update, we will have Goldberg Group here next meeting, as well as Hutton. They'll provide you with at least a seventy-five percent design completion update rendition of that facility, and he should have the anticipated budget for that project, based upon that seventy-five percent completion. So, and from that, on the Fourth as well, we should have the first transfers for that project. And then, of course, the treasurer's remodel. She received one bid on that. Lee Construction will come back to the commission, should be back with the commission on the Fourth on the recommendation on that.
And the repair in the treasurer's office is budgeted already?
It is. We did have ample, she'd been setting aside monies for about the last five years, and the bid came in underneath that, what she had set aside.
Wonderful. That's good news.
Great.
Continue, sir.
I have nothing else at this point in time. Do you have any questions for me?
Your LEC update was on the Third?
No, it's on the Fourth. It'll be, it'll be on the, excuse me, it'll be on the Fourth.
Oh, okay.
After the...
After the commission.
Yeah, after the commission. It'll be for that committee. The Health Department EMS is on the Fourth. It'll be a presentation to the full board.
Okay. Can we, the other commissioners attend the LEC update without conflicting with your open meeting rules, or is that...
You already have two commissioners on that.
And another one that we have to...
Okay.
Enough said. Good question.
I think, actually, on the following meeting, on the eighteenth, you'll receive, the full board will receive a update from...
We wanted to rubber stamp it before we showed it to you, Larry.
Yeah.
When does your LEC committee meet?
The Fourth.
The Fourth, after our commission meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Our meeting.
Hour.
Our meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Robert.
Firewood.
Your, your update on hiring, can you kind of fill us in a little bit? You're looking for a number of positions. Are you still struggling?
We're still moving forward on putting out notices on various positions. We'll have, probably by the middle of this week, we'll have four separate positions posted at Public Works. That's going to provide us, whenever we get a qualified individual for one of those positions, that'll provide us with the basis on moving forward on the neighborhood development project. We're working both with the college and the high school on some other positions, internships, those types of things, and that's working out quite well, with efforts from Kelly on that to get it promoted. And we've had a few job fairs, for lack of a better word, out there at the fairgrounds for that purpose. So, we're continuing to push information out in the public on the need for qualified individuals to come work here in Finney County.
Are we posted outside of our website and so forth?
Absolutely. Yes, yes. Both on a regional and statewide basis.
I would just add, I know through KAC, they've been publishing some of the, I don't know that all of them, but some of them have been published through the email newsletter.
That must be a nationwide problem, but I had to laugh here a while back. I was in the big city of Dayton, and they had a motor grader, the county motor grader, sitting across the sidewalk, and a sign on it, "We need to hire somebody to come and move this thing." And I thought, you know, that gets attention. That was one way to go about it.
Well, we continue to have a lot of positions open for the county, but it's something that's been kind of chronic, at least for the two years that I've been...
Oh, yeah, yeah. More than that.
All right.
Thank you, Robert.
Any other questions for the Commissioner or the Administrator at this point? All right. We'll hear from the County Counselor.
I have a final meeting with the treasurer after we, the completion of this meeting this morning, to tie up the final matters before filing the tax sales. Should have everything in place to get that filed this week after that meeting with her. So, just had a final check with her on what she saw as far as legal descriptions, tax IDs, et cetera, and then there was just one issue that had popped up that we needed to discuss before I get it filed.
Wonderful. Anything else?
No.
All right. Very good. Commissioners' reports, right to left this time?
Mr. Chairman, before, I'm sorry to interrupt. Before you do that, would you like to act on that motion that I've had that's...
All right. It's a good idea. The prepared waiver regarding the truck parking at thirty-nine-five Mason Court has been prepared by the County Counselor. Each of us have reviewed it. I'll read it into the record and ask for then a motion. Waiver has been requested to allow additional truck parking at thirty-nine-five Mason Court, Garden City, Finney County, Kansas, having considered statements submitted by neighbors, property owners, the makeup of the neighborhood, and intended use of the extra truck parking, to allow for the additional help and resources to maintain the road for use of the residents and emergency vehicles. The Board of County Commissioners grants a waiver for the subject property with the following limitations on the waiver. This waiver shall be limited to the current owners of the subject property, Hector and Marilyn Oliphable. This waiver shall be limited to a total of five semi-trucks and trailers, and this waiver shall be filed with the Register of Deeds, signed this date, October twenty-twenty-four, signed by all the commissioners and attested by the clerk for filing with the Register of Deeds.
That would be my motion.
Moved and seconded to approve the waiver as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Today's the twenty-first. Now, we'll go right to left on Commissioner's updates, please.
The only thing I have is, maybe on aging is, this Thursday, is moved from last week.
Mr. Pishney.
I've attended several meetings, including the Extension District, and they're working with our Fair Board here in Finney County, also the Fair Board in Scott County with regard to memorandums of understanding, and that's been presented to our Fair Board, and they're going back to the drawing board as far as some revisions and so forth. So, that's in process, and our County Counselor's probably going to be involved in reviewing on behalf of our Fair Board. Been attending other meetings, like the in-service for the employees, the chamber breakfast, a few other things, and nothing special to report from those.
Mr. Reese.
I too made a brief appearance at the in-service that Monday. Convention and Visitors Bureau, our new appointee, was there, and expressed, or appreciation for being appointed to that board, and other than that, it was just a normal meeting. That's pretty much it.
All right. And Commissioner...
I had no meetings.
All right. I do want to report for the public and the commission that Compass Area Mental Health has received its CHBCC designation. This is a huge event for us, and for Compass, and for the community. As you know, they are now two-hundred-and-seventy employees strong, having hired over eighty people over the course of the last year. In terms of significance of growth and impact on our community, Compass continues to do some really great things. I will not be attending their meeting this Thursday night due to travel, but we'll try to report back. I also did attend the county... I also did attend the county Employees Build Benefits Meeting, and talked with some vendors there, and the vendors were from not just our community, but outside the community, and it provided a great opportunity for all the employees of the county to see other people's opportunities for benefits and ideas in the realm of employee benefits. I thought this was done really well, I compliment the administrator, Kelly Muggins, and the commi, and the committee. I did make a short remark there, I will emphasize again that to our employees, that attitude and complacency are viruses, and a positive attitude is a cure. And I think that those remarks, I hope, were well received by our employees, and I also emphasized that the employees are the people that actually do the work, and commend them for being the eyes, hands, and ears of county government. And with that, I believe that we have one other item on our agenda for an executive session, and the executive session's called at the request of the county councillor for non-elected personnel, and who else should be in our meeting?
Just the administrative.
County councillor and the administrator only for our executive session for non-elected personnel, is there such a motion, and what's the amount of time?
I'll offer the motion, if we can put a break in before.
I will, but we need to have an amount of time.
Twenty, thirty minutes?
Thirty minutes?
Thirty minutes, okay.
I will agree this time, just for fun. We will commence at 11, or 10:25 for 30 minutes, and be back not before 5 till 11. Is there a motion that that's...
I think he made the motion, I'll second that.
And the motion to go into executive session with the county councillor and the administrator for the period of time as stated, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, we're in executive session.
Seconded to return to regular session, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll state that no formal action was taken. And I would also state publicly that unless any commissioner has any motion to make with regard to the administrator's contract, but no actual being taken at this time. Hearing none, then a motion to adjourn.
Move we adjourn.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn any other business before the commission. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, we are adjourned, thank you.